And very pleased this evening to be turning over our DEI organizational assessment review and having an update from Noelle Amaya. Thank you.
All right. So for those of you who might not know, I am the city staff to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee. I'm also the project manager for this organizational assessment of diversity, equity, and inclusion. I've actually asked Jodi Christensen here to bring her wide range of project management experience. So she will be co-leading with me on this project. You should feel comfortable directing your questions to either of us throughout the duration of the course of this assessment. I'm really excited to bring this project to you or what we're calling an initiative, Words Matter. And we'd really like to see this work follow us through the coming years, not just at the end of this project. So most of you are familiar with some of the communications-heavy projects that I've led, like Dollars and Cents, or when we launched iHeartMAC. But I especially love when I get to bring projects to this body that speak to my role's commitment to equitable and meaningful engagement. My role here at the city is one that each time I'm before you, we get to explore topics like how we're trying to reach all of McMinnville's community members and how we can bring practices to the city that not only move us towards awareness, but really celebration, which is one of our priorities that we have embedded in our strategic plan. The purpose of tonight's work session is to simply get you up to speed on the organizational assessment for diversity, equity, and inclusion and performing an assessment which was identified in the council, by the council as in the strategic plan, as a way to understand really where the city is at, to create a baseline. Or as our consultant recently explained to us in the DEIAC, as a way for us to sort of take our vital signs, a good look at the health of our organization. So this will help us bring, create some structure and create some structure behind what progress will look like in these areas as we begin to make changes. I realize that the word "assessment" can feel a little bit intimidating, but don't let that scare you. I believe there are many things that we're doing very well as a city. We've made some really great changes over the last couple of years that I've seen since I've been in this role. So not only will we get to celebrate what we're doing right, which is really important to do, we need to celebrate our wins as a community. But it will also help us unearth the areas that we've had less progress in and help us set parameters or priorities for improvement as an organization so that we can better develop an understanding of the type of support that we need so that we can turn around and use that knowledge to better serve our community members. We will have a short presentation from our consultant group, Talitha, and I'll let them introduce themselves, and then we'll have some time for Q and A and comments from the council. Jodi, do you have anything to add?
I think an important part of this project is it's not only an internal look at the enterprise as the city, but it's also how we serve the community, the services that we provide. So it's an internal look and an external assessment as well. So that's an important part of it. I look forward to this project. There's a lot of energy at the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee around this process. They've been looking forward to it, and at our kickoff meeting, you could see that they're just really ready to go. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you.
And with that, we'll just go ahead and hand it off to you, Karis.
Thank you both, Jodi and Noelle. Hi, everyone. My name is Karis Mnin. C-H, all the Hs are there to confuse you, so I put the actual pronunciation in parentheses. I am delighted to be here and believe it or not, to see Sal and also the mayor, Eiding, put us at ease to know that this is a work session, right? So to that end, I just want to encourage you to just chime in and ask questions. We have specifically designed this as a conversational piece, not so much monologue or presentation-heavy. I am here because of my team, and I am also here because I have been very impressed with the city of McMinnville when I was supporting MIG Incorporated and also with the works for, let me get this right, all the acronyms, Parks, Recreation, Open Space, PROS Plan, right? So I had the opportunity to interact with Susan Muir and also Noelle, and I told my team that when I saw the RFP come out for organizational assessment, that we ought to go after this. We are a boutique consulting firm by design. I am a working principal. I like to do, roll up my sleeve and do the work. And so when that came out, I said, let's go after this. They are really amazing people on the ground who think beyond their own generational need. And that's what it is too with our work is, you know, we talk about being on the land of the indigenous people, but are we also paying attention to their values, which is they plan for seven generations? And so to that end, I saw that virtue and value in Noelle and Susan, and so we kind of went after it. And we've been rigorously and competitive selection process, right, Noelle? And she can tell you more about it if you want to hear about it. We also learned that there was a lot of folks from outside of Oregon competing for this work. So all is to say, RFP was very well-written, kudos to whoever participated in that process. So here we are today. Joining me today is my colleague Eugene Marmazuk, super talented, multilingual, business and nonprofit major. I am super lucky to have Eugene support this project. Eugene is multilingual in Ukrainian, Russian, and English, and perhaps Pokemon as well. I don't know. Carol is our fierce leader, Carol Rosomolsky, our deputy project manager for this initiative and also our associate principal. Carol and I go a long way, not going to say how long, but we've been in the work of affordable housing, equitable development, and now in transportation support. Talitha's been partnering with Carol for the last three years. Also joining me from the state of California, because Luz is out in California, Luz Boiz. She was very instrumental in supporting the PROS Plan community engagement. So Luz also brings that prior interaction with the city. To anybody else? No, nobody else. Okay, great. So let's get this going.
Thank Karis. Just to quickly interject, I may need co-host.
Oh, okay. I cannot help you with that. Can someone help Eugene with giving co-host permission, please? Otherwise, you'll have to do the presentation. I'll just sit back and relax.
Thank you. Just got it.
Perfect. That's too bad. All right. So here we are. Again, as Noelle was saying, right, values of diversity, equity, and inclusion are not something that we do one and done. As you have articulated in your MAC Town 2032, it is one of the four values that you've listed. And so with the permission and the agreement from Diversity Equity Inclusion Advisory Council, from now on, we'll be calling it DEIAC, we've kind of named this effort as Organizational Assessment Initiative. Next.
Good evening. It is my honor to introduce to you Talitha's consults. And I would like to begin by saying that Talitha means little girl in Arabic, and specifically it means little girl, rise up. And this gives you a window into what matters to us. As a women and immigrant-led organization, we believe that when we rise up, we rise up together. And our mindset to the work is that when we succeed, we succeed together. The slide that you see in front of you provides detail about our guiding principles, our framework and our service model. And to that end, we identify that diversity is who we are together, not what we do. So it's good to state how we lead. We lead by interest and curiosity. We want to know more about McMinnville and what matters to you. We want to know what gets you motivated. We want to know what gets you activated, and we know, we want to know what causes you pain. We also want to learn about what it means to be fair and to feel belonging in your community. To that end, we believe in deep listening, equitable development, and radical inclusion. Radical inclusion means that when we plan to serve the most vulnerable people in our community, everyone is taken care of. This is who we are, and we hope that this adds value to your long-term planning. With that, I will turn it back over to Karis to go into detail about the initiative.
I think the next slide would be for Luz. So Luz, feel free to chime in.
Oh, pardon me, Luz.
I am delighted to present Talita's team, who is comprised of partners and advisors who bring expert-level knowledge and expertise from diverse industries and multiple disciplines. Each team member's unique linguistic and cultural background further enrich the type of services Talita offers to its clients, such as the city of McMinnville, other cities, parks and recreation districts, and other entities. We bring a multicultural and multilingual perspective to our work, and collectively, we're fluent in 14 languages, including Chinese, Somali, Spanish, Swahili, and Vietnamese. Moreover, our team leads with cultural humility, acknowledging that we do not know it all, but are fully aware that each community has its own context and value. And we approach our work with openness and respect. Karis will expand more on this later.
Thanks, Luz. With that storytelling, I have to go into the very boring slide. Eugene, next. Well, with all these grounding of values and framework, nevertheless, this is a project, right? That's why we have timeline, milestone, expectations, and deliverables. So when the RFP went out, we looked at it, and then as a team, we said there's going to be two phases that we're going to try to execute. And again, it's more of a journey than a one-and-done approach. So we kind of use the image of a travel road. And so phase one would involve, as Carol is saying, inquiry-based, right? We really want to get to know the city of McMinnville. So just like Noelle was saying earlier, if you were, you know, an individual going in for a, let's just say, medical assessment, right, like physical or whatnot, the first thing they do is they take their vital signs, where you're at, right? One thing I don't understand was just they kept measuring my height. But then I realized that it's not because I'm growing, I could grow smaller or shrink. And so in any case, so this is what we're doing with phase one, deliverable task 1.1 to 1.3 is collecting pertinent documents. Noelle and Jodi did a fabulous job responding to our request for information, two pages long of documents that I've requested, and they provided to Talitha's team very timely. So we're going to try to get the pulse, context, culture, values, and things that gives you joy, things that gives you pain, and so we're trying to discover. Alongside that is, Carol mentioned about the co-creative process. I am a regional planner by training. I believe strongly in participatory planning, just like it says in your RFP call-out, right? The DEI needs to align with the community needs. And so one of the things that we are continuously, iteratively paying attention to the community needs is by engaging with key stakeholders. So as you can see on the rectangular boxes, we'll be workshopping with DEIAC every month during their meeting, right? And so we had an in-person kickoff in March, and then we'll be meeting again March all the way through September. It is also important that we are iteratively and participatory planning happen with city council as well. So we will be, through Noelle, finding a way to come back and offer a feedback loop and incorporate your feedback into our assessment plan. Phase two of it, it comes with implementation. So phase two is when we, once we have the data from the community, from the stakeholders, we will analyze it, we will see what the core themes are, and that will inform the recommendations that we have for the city. I'm very careful about just using best practices and any available literature out there because what is best for, say, the city of Burlington, Vermont, might not be the best for the city of McMinnville. So it is important that the information that we embrace and gather from phase one is guiding phase two. Next. Luz will kind of dive in a little bit deeper into what we meant by meaningful community engagement.
Our mixed method engagement consists of the following. First, primary data sources which are centered on people, conducting individual in-depth interviews with key stakeholders, listening sessions in language-targeted population. We take in consideration that the most spoken language is in the city of McMinnville. This can be conducted in English, Spanish, Chinese, Vietnamese, and thanks to our multilingual and cross-cultural team. For example, Talita's previous work on the PROS Plan in the partnership with the city and MIG to design and implement mixed method community engagement strategies, including in-depth individual interviews, a listening session with stakeholders, and provided a facilitation guide for conversation with teams, and also supported the development of two multilingual community surveys. From our experience, we have found that interviews in Spanish in small groups or one-on-one make a deeper and more meaningful connection with the Hispanic population. In one of our tasks, Talita will conduct three listening circles with the internal stakeholders. In the past, these sessions have proven to be effective in gaining internal support for DEI initiatives. Second, our initiative approach also includes secondary data resources, such as the American Community Survey, the 2020 census data, the school data, the school district data, public and health and human services at the state and county levels. And our team will use the organizational assessment findings from the primary and secondary sources to give us more insight and help us develop a comprehensive assessment report, including the strengths, challenges, opportunities, and risks. Talita consults will use the organizational assessment findings to develop a comprehensive report summarizing the DEI strategies and goals for the city. And this report will be the groundwork for prioritizing recommendations to help meet the five engagement and inclusion objectives in MAC Town 2032.
I'd like to chime in here, if I may, to make an observation about the methodology. Luz described the importance of language access in terms of getting quality and insightful information. This is, at its core, accessibility. Now, I would like to identify today as a person with a disability, sometimes in Zoom calls, I feel like I'm a bit in disguise because you can't see the wheelchair that I use for mobility. But accessibility is a concept that disability justice and the disability community feels very passionately about, and we love it when the idea of accessibility is brought into other spaces. I'd also like to name with the PROS initiative that there was an emphasis placed on adaptable play, and that allowed people with differences in ability to enjoy parks faces. Disability is not always the first thing that people identify with when they introduce themselves. But in this case, the Parks Initiative allowed for senior citizens to benefit from changes that were made, and people who identify as veterans. So this is a great example of how when we bring accessibility along and when we put the emphasis on belonging, we carry everybody with us. Thank you for letting me share that.
Thanks, Carol. Thanks for willing to be vulnerable and share your story here. And that's what it is, folks, about cultural humility, is starts itself, starts itself and our self-awareness, what is, what is keeping us awake at night in terms of our frustration, our, you know, our unmet needs? And when we are self-aware about our unmet needs, we are able to be more curious about how, what is it that's causing me this level of, you know, interest or discomfort? And through inquiry of oneself, our hope is that we continue to cultivate curiosity about other people's stories as well, right? I mean, I haven't shared my story with you, Luz hasn't shared her story with you, and I also know that all the people sitting on the, these chairs up there, either you're on the chair or on, you know, on the ground level like Noelle and Jodi, we all have stories. So cultural humility, pull in these elements of culturally informed practices. I just want to see, by the show of hands, how many of you have heard of these terms, culturally informed, culturally relevant, culturally appropriate? Yep, I see hands going up, right? So what's happening is that in social sciences, we have this debate of which practice is better than others. At Talitha, we step back and say, you know what? We ought to aspire to do all of those things at different time and different context. They come very useful, all of them. It's not like one is better than the others. And knowing when to use which tool and which framework is what we consider cultural humility to be. So we hope to practice this alongside the DEIAC project team and also alongside the community at McMinnville. And the next slide basically tells you that you are not alone, city of McMinnville. We at Talitha have the privilege of working alongside and walking alongside many municipalities across the United States, and these are some of the clients that we have supported, not only in the organizational assessment, but also about equitable community engagement, also disability justice like Carol was talking about. And many of our clients, especially in Oregon area, is public transportation clients. And so we also look at growth and how that impacts all the different, right, factors of social determinants of health. And so again, this is just to say, you are not alone, you are in good hands, and we hope to work alongside you. At the end of the day, like the RFP said, let's see here, the organizational assessment intent is, well, to make sure that we are helping positioning the city so that it is in a position where we're meeting the MAC Town 2032 strategic goals in a way that is equitable, inclusive, and to lift all, a tide that lifts all boats, right? We're all in different shapes and sizes of boats, but to create a tide that lifts all boats. So thank you so much for this opportunity, and I'm just going to go to the next slide and say, this is time for questions. So thank you very much. Eugene, I think we can stop sharing.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Any additional comments from either our communications engagement manager or special projects manager before we open this up? I'm happy to start. I'll go ahead and take the liberty, if you don't mind. Thank you. You noted that you were going to be doing interviews with key stakeholders, and then you specifically mentioned the DEIAC. So I kind of have two follow-ups on that. One is, are you engaging with any other culturally specific organizations, whether the Asian Heritage Society, UNIDOS, or organizations that have clientele that aren't, you know, that has a broader representation, so Virginia Garcia Medical Center or other supportive organizations? And then I know the DEIAC spent its first year interviewing department heads, and so without any, without any, without not acknowledge, I don't want to not acknowledge that work that was done, and I'm wondering if you, as an organization, will also be doing that work, especially because government moves slow and then we move fast at the same time. And so I just think there are initiatives within different departments that maybe you're aware of, but maybe you're not aware of as well. So those are kind of the two sides of on your following up on key stakeholders, where I'm wondering how that work is being directed. I didn't mention in the organizations, also organizations specifically that are serving low-income populations, I think would be another important community or key stakeholder. And we know those internally and can continue to share them. And then I just, I also wanted to just highlight the work of the city that, and Carol, thank you for highlighting the work done in the PROS Plan in terms of disability rights. I think that's also a main driver on our Third Street Improvement Project, and it's something we talk about regularly, is that we have an accessibility problem, not just on Third Street, through a lot of the city, really, with our many broken sidewalks, et cetera. But in terms of a current plan that's in action, I just do want to highlight that that is also one of the, one of the call-outs and drivers of the importance of getting that project addressed. And then within that, I think there's some, kind of going back to the department head interviews, I think there are some other areas or projects in the city that are being worked on and some that are newer, that it would be great to just include in this, whether or not they actualize all the way. But our congressionally-directed spending ask for this year, for instance, that's focused on sidewalk repair in low-income neighborhoods where there's especially broken or missing sidewalks that have a specific impact on folks that are trying to, you know, we're on the whole community, but specifically impacting folks that have accessibility or mobility concerns, those neighborhoods that are inaccessible. So I just want to make sure we're calling out all of that. In addition to that, I'm wondering, and this is kind of a question for Jeff, this is kind of a question for Noelle, I'm not sure, but we are doing a bit of a data scrub right now additionally on part of the city. So through a project we're doing at Harvard Graduate School of Design, we're doing a focus project on injustices and where they appear in our city. So we have some more specific information, and maybe there's an opportunity for us to share that back with the DEIAC or with your consulting group as we kind of move through some of that work. So I just, I wanted to share that. And thank you so much for your presentation, being here, and your work with the city. I'll open it up to other counselors for questions or comments. Just kind of looking around. Counselor Gary.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Good to see you again, Karis, and to meet some of your colleagues this time. One specific question I had was, Karis, you had mentioned prior in one of your presentations discussions about how the recommendations, the suite of recommendations that you'll provide, when we onboard those, will help and improve, for lack of a better term, sort of qualifications and compliance-related issues in terms of, in terms of government programs and grants and qualifications? Can you speak a little bit more about that or? Can you speak a little bit more about that or correct me if I'm wrong?
You're never wrong. You're kidding. No, you're right.
Counselor Chenoweth?
I think it's the mask. Are you Counselor Gary? Hey, look, I am happy to answer, but I do need to reiterate the questions that I heard because the mayor kind of, kind of, kind of said a lot of things. So may I please put them into digestible sizes? Is that okay?
Go for it.
All right. So please correct me if I misheard you, Mayor. There were two questions that you asked, a two-part question. Number one being, in terms of the interviews, you are asking, will we also be interviewing community-based organizations that are specifically serving the vulnerable population and also culturally-specific organizations? That's your question number one. Is that correct?
Correct.
Great. And number two is about acknowledging the prior work that's been done by DEIAC committee, including the work that they did with interviewing the department heads within the city. And I, I am a little fuzzy on what is the question for that?
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, the setup was a lot. I, I didn't want to not acknowledge the work already done by DEIAC. I am also wondering, as part of your internal scrub, if you will also be re-interviewing department heads to learn about the specific equity work that they're doing within their departments?
So, so, so thank you for mentioning that. Okay, so let me tackle with question number one. And the answer is yes. We have 28, which we call IDI, in-depth individual interviews that we've scheduled. That is, including seven department heads. This is my first time to hear that DEIAC had interviewed the department heads before. So thank you for enlightening me and informing me about that. So I'm gonna take a note of that. And I'm also gonna go back to my team to do a request for information, to gather what it is that DEIAC found during their interview, okay? So thank you for that piece of information. With the 28 interviewees, minus the seven, you are still left with 21, right? And so we do not predetermine who we're gonna be interviewing. So thank you for giving me a list of the organizations that you mentioned. We are going to be using what we call in our research, snowball sampling. So when I, let's say I have interview, I don't know, I can hardly see names here. Sal, your name is very visible. Example, if I interview Sal, I interviewed, and at the very end, I would ask Sal, given the context of our conversation, are there people we need to talk to? And then that will give us opportunity to snowball into having another conversation. So this is how we have broken into. We are going to be interviewing 14 service users. That's the, that's the term y'all put in your RFP. Whether they be residents, whether they be CBOs, community-based organization, or community activists, at this point, we are not predetermining it. Does that answer your question? Question one.
Yes, I heard that you will be interviewing service organizations that serve marginalized communities as well as culturally-specific organizations, and that you have over 20 individual interviews. You're going to be doing seven of which will be dedicated to department head interviews.
Bingo. Great. Pass.
I also have practiced my reflexive listening. Thank you.
All right. The number two, I kind of answered it by being honest with you, that this is my first time to hear about it. So we're gonna follow up with the RFI, okay?
Sounds good.
Oh, 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 yeah. How can I forget? Counselor Gary, yes, you do have a question, right? So may I restate what I heard? In our prior conversations, especially, especially at the kickoff meeting, I did mention about a suite of, a suite of recommendations that we offer would also position McMinnville to be more compliant as well as put in a better position in terms of requirements that might, that may come from other jurisdictions.
Yes.
Did I hear that correctly?
Yes.
Correct. All right. So yes, for example, I'll give you this example. During the pandemic, many of the municipalities, local municipalities, receive federal government relief funds, right? My understanding is ARPA is one of them. And ARPA, can someone help me out with what it stands for? American Rescue?
American Rescue Plan Act.
Right. And so, so that's one example, right? So along with the federal funding, or even a pass-through funding through state, earlier Mayor talked about congressional funding. All those things comes with certain set of requirement. For example, Executive Order 1366 that talks about all the programs funded by the federal government must consider language accessibility. So, so by doing this organizational assessment, you're also preparing yourself as a city for compliance with some of the rules that you may not have to pay attention to before. But now you do. So that's just one example. But I think Mayor, example about, you know, the state, Oregon State, wanting to see development investment and paralleling it with disparity areas, that would be another example as well. Counselor Gary, any other questions?
Good for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Or that's not my job?
Thank you. Counselor Mankey?
I greatly appreciate all your, appreciate all your expertise and thank you for filling us in on how you're going to be doing this. I guess the only question I had as I went through it, and I was looking at, you know, the fact that you're gonna be talking with department heads and with people within the departments too, is there's a final presentation to the city council. Are you going to be doing any discussions one-on-one with the city council? Out of curiosity, because we are kind of a part of this.
Absolutely. Absolutely. But let, let me clarify by asking this. So if, are you asking, are we gonna be including city counselors in the interview? Or are you asking if we're gonna come back in addition to the presentation?
Either one, I'm just, I don't know what you're planning to do.
Yeah. So in our slide deck, we mentioned that we are gonna come back to a working session again. So that will be another interaction. And it is imperative, because at the end of the day, we are, we know who we are. We are consultants. We come and go. It is policymakers like you, residents, DEIAC committee, is what's, who's gonna bring this value-driven initiative to life? And Counselor Mankey, one of my colleagues' last name is exactly as yours, so I wonder if relatives up in Washington state? No?
None that I'm aware of.
Oh, okay, okay.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Do you have any other questions?
I'm sorry.
Any additional questions?
No, that, that's it. I just was curious to see how much we would be drawn into this, that's all. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I want to say this too, like, you know, all the once-a-month meeting that I'm working alongside DEIAC, y'all can come, right? Noel, please correct me.
Oh, they're public meetings. Anybody can attend.
So please, the more the merrier.
And Counselor Payne?
Thank you. I want to first say thank you to the DEIAC for doing the work that you've been doing so thoughtfully with no budget. So first, thank you for that. The second part is maybe a little bit of a loaded question is, is there anything that we can do now? Is there anything that we can start with now?
Is the loaded question for me or the DEIAC committee?
I believe that Noel was prepared to answer, Caris. But if you have input, I would gladly take it.
Please, Noel, take the loaded question.
I don't mind starting this off before handing it over to Noel. I would just say that since this was identified as a goal, the city has taken action. And you can see that evidenced in a lot of things. You may notice that all of our mailers now go out in English and Spanish, where previously they only went out in English as...
I mean, in addition.
In addition, I'm sorry.
To what is already being done. So, because it sounds like the goal of this work session or the goal of the consultant is to identify the gaps. Because there has been a lot of work. I mean, the website transition, translation was massive. And all the work with the...
So I'm hearing this question as, do you, so in the work of the DEIAC, which that committee was formed a year and a half, two years ago? Correct me if I'm wrong. You've, there's work underway or that's been started, that's acknowledged. This is the net, this is one of the steps in the work agenda, which is to do this internal, an external review. And what I hear you asking is if there's any other action items that may begin before the assessment is complete? Is that correct?
Yes. Thank you for summarizing, yes. Because at the end of the day, I think, I think that Caris and the sort of presentation, and maybe Carol said it on that slide, is it's, it's not what we do, it's who we are. So who can we be to the community? Not, of course, asking how we live our lives, but is there anything that we can do grassroots or, you know, pavement pounding? Like what can we be doing on a, you know, with our hearts and our words locally, without the budget, that we, to support, to continue supporting the efforts in addition to what the DEIAC has already done?
If I, if I could, I think I understand your question. In that we have been taking active baby steps as much as we can to provide materials that are accessible, to think about our events differently, to be sure that we're making those little changes. And each, each department sort of does that, or each area, depending on the activity, does that in their own way right now. It's definitely something that, and like I said in my introduction, that we have, we've been doing a lot of things right. We've been making a lot of positive changes over the last couple of years. The DEIAC was formed in 2020, actually. So it's been four years, nearly four years, that they've been a group. And, and I think they've been sort of, they, they've been in a place where having the support of the council, I think, is imperative to them being able to make some real strides. So in addition to all the things that we're, that we're doing and still pushing for now, which we're all sort of doing individually and with the support of each other, I think an, an easy way to answer that question is that, attend a DEIAC meeting. Come in, hear what the DEIAC, some of the things that they're struggling with. Be a part of the, of this assessment from that perspective. Because I think that's something that could really benefit this initiative moving in a positive direction. I'm not sure if it was clearly outlined that the DEIAC actually will spend their every, a portion of every meeting they have for the duration of this assessment, working on this with, with our project team here, our consultant team. So they will spend their hour from three to four every second Thursday of each month, focused in on this project and dialing in some of the things that we, that we know are missing, like, like a city-wide accepted definition for diversity, equity, and inclusion. That's one of the first things that's on the table for us to do in, in April. So maybe a long-winded way to say, get involved. I think that's the easiest sort of way you can make change now.
Thank you.
I see that Carol has her microphone unmuted, so.
I always have my microphone unmuted. But I, I would like to address this because I know, working in government, that one of the paradoxes we have to navigate is doing an initiative like what we're discussing today, getting this wonderful product at the end of it, and then realizing that the financial resources are not there to support the scope of what we're recommending. We recognize that there are limitations related to that. I am a very strong advocate for something that I like to call reverse engineering. So I like to start with what the vision is. And the vision can be done on a city-wide level. It can be done on a department level. It could be with the council itself. And that's where you envision where you want to be. And then you start reverse engineering the steps that you need to do in order to get there. So by doing this and focusing on things like what your approach is, it can be very impactful. And I think your Parks example is very strong in how that can work. So some of the work has started around adaptive play and accessibility. But what the leaders in Parks ended up doing is recognizing the power of accessibility as a broader concept. And so there was an investment in figuring out how to be more accessible, not only in terms of space planning, but in terms of how you show up in the work. So those are the sorts of methodologies that I would really encourage you to consider. Because how you show up is not financed any differently from one deed to the next. It's a decision that you make day to day.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any additional questions or comments from council? Just check the Zoom screen real quick. Okay, well, there's no additional comments. Any closing comments either from our consultants or our city team? No, not hearing any.
Enjoy your extra 10 minutes before the next session. Thank you for having us.
All right, wonderful. Thank you so much for being here. The work session is closed at 6:48 PM. We look forward to seeing you again. We will take a 12-minute break and start the regular meeting of the McMinnville City Council at 7 o'clock. Thanks so much.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Recording in progress. It is 6:59. If I could ask everyone to grab their seats, I'd be grateful. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. Just to give an overlay of the meeting before we start, we will have our call to order, pledge of allegiance, proclamation, department head reports. Then we'll go into public comment. After that, we have a presentation from McMinnville Water and Light, and then the consent agenda, followed by some resolutions and ordinances. It is now 7:00 PM on March 26th, 2024, and I would like to call to order the regular session of the McMinnville City Council. And I would ask Claudia Sisneros, our city recorder, to do a roll call.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Wow, I'm first.
I know. I'm just going right down the line.
Present.
Counselor Geary.
Good evening.
Counselor Minkie.
Present.
Counselor Payne. Council President Carvin.
Here.
And Mayor Drabkin.
Here. And in light of the fact that it is his birthday today, I would ask our city manager to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Now, I think you all may, my timing is amazing here. I think you are all probably additionally familiar with this number. And if you will help me, now, we are, of course, learning our lessons from the COVID-19 pandemic and not pushing up any regulations that our fire marshal may be concerned about, or that our fire board president may have to report back. But I do hope you'll help me. And thank you for the pause this evening while we take the moment to quickly wish happy birthday to our city manager. His name's Jeff Towery when we get to that moment, if you need, or you just Jeff will probably work. But happy birthday.
To you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Jeff. Happy birthday to you.
Speech.
And everyone, we'd be happy to share our day for acknowledging us in a little community activity before digging into the business section. Take the win.
Yes.
Excellent. Well, while, while you dish up some cake, I am going to make our proclamation for this evening. Tonight, we are supporting the designation of April 2024 as Parkinson's Awareness Month. And whereas Parkinson's disease is a chronic progressive neurological disease and is the second most common neurodegenerative disease in the United States, and whereas the Michael J. Fox Foundation for Parkinson's Research is dedicated to finding a cure for Parkinson's disease through an aggressively funded research agenda and to ensuring the development of improved therapies for those living with Parkinson's today. And whereas there is adequate data on the incidence and prevalence of Parkinson's disease, but it is estimated to affect nearly 1 million people in the United States, including more than 20,000 people in Oregon, and that number is expected to more than double by 2040. And where, whereas it is estimated that 90,000 individuals of all ages are diagnosed annually with Parkinson's disease in North America, 50% higher than the 60,000 annual diagnoses that research previously suggested. And whereas it is estimated that Parkinson's costs $52 billion per year, of which the federal government shoulders $29 billion, leaving American families to cover the remaining $29 billion. And whereas it is estimated that more than 1.6 million people in the United States will be impacted by Parkinson's by 2037 at an estimated economic burden of $80 billion. And whereas there's no known cure or drug to slow or halt the progression of the disease, and available treatments are limited to their ability to address patients' medical needs and remain effective over time. And whereas the city of McMinnville recognizes the efforts of the Michael J. Fox Foundation for Parkinson's Research as it leverages its core values of optimism, urgency, resourcefulness, collaboration, accountability, and persistence in problem solving to work on behalf of the 6 million people of all ages worldwide living with Parkinson's. And whereas increased research, education, and community support services are needed to find more effective treatments and to provide access to quality care to those living with the disease today, now therefore I, Remy Drabkin, mayor of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as Parkinson's Awareness Month. And in witness whereof, I have here on to set my hand this 26th day of March in the year 2024. Thank you. And thank you so much. And with that, we're going to move into council and department head reports. And so I will start with the counselors on the dais currently, while our other counselors are busy also still serving their community. We'll start with Counselor Payne.
Thank you. Lipstick meets tomorrow, and landscape review met last week and approved a street tree removal. Thank you. Counselor Minkie.
Good evening. I come bearing gifts tonight. A preliminary, and I must read this disclaimer to be appropriate. The disclaimer is the data presented below is a preliminary data only. It is not final, and it may contain errors. The final data will be released by HUD at a later unknown date. Last year, it was like nine months late. The final data may change from what is presented below. The information below is a preliminary data based only on raw data available at this time. This is from YCAP. So on the, the information provided to the counselors, the total unsheltered that were counted were 158. Two-thirds of these were male. Only nine veterans, 6%, were identified. One-third, or 36%, were chronically homeless. For nearly half, 47%, this is not their first time being homeless. In fact, most, 73%, have been homeless more than, more than one year. 40% have been homeless more than three years. Except the 158. How long have you been homeless this time? 11 of them were homeless, zero to three months. Nine were homeless from four to six months. Five were homeless from seven to 11 months. 34 were homeless from 12 to 23 months. This one, other ones were really hard to read. I believe it's 36 months or more. And then, yeah, 36 months or more was the green. And 24 to 35. So many people were significantly homeless. These are probably the more chronically homeless people that were showing up for this point in time count. About one-third, or 3/4, 34% of the report, reported a substance abuse disorder out of the entire 158. About one, about another third, 37%, reported chronic health conditions. And about one-fourth report, a mental health condition, 28%, or a physical health condition, 30%. Close to one-third, 30%, are having also domestic violence experience. The majority of the unsheltered surveyed were in McMinnville. I may make a comment at this because there were five different areas that were looked at, and Wilhelmina has a warming shelter in their library, or cooling shelter, as it happens. And for whatever reason, that day, no one showed up. So there might have been some influencing of whether people showed at that particular site. The majority, okay, so the majority of the unsheltered were, were in McMinnville. That's 76% is what we counted. Newburgh showed 5%, Sheridan showed 7%. And there was other and unknown that were 12% together. So it's, in some respects, it might have been a low count. Let's see. For nearly half, 47%, this was not their first time in being homeless. In fact, almost 73% have been homeless more than one year. 40% have been homeless more than three years. Pretty high. And going around, those are just the basic numbers. So some thoughts from YCAP on this. YCAP, in the last three and a half, four years, has put over $10 million into the community for weatherization, for helping people pay rent, for utilities, all sorts of things. So it stands to reason that the numbers would go down. But what YCAP's feeling was, and please correct me, because there's two ladies who are very central to this, these comments, sitting here tonight, that for the people that remain homeless, the ones with the most significant, appear to be the ones with the most significant problems, and the ones who have been homeless the longest time, it's a great barrier, once they've been homeless for over a year, to get back into a normal socialized environment. And it's going to take some serious mental health socialized environment. And it's going to take some serious mental health assistance and other medical assistance to help on this. Is there anything else you ladies would like to add? Please feel free to come up and just say something if you want to.
Welcome. Nice to see you again.
And Amber, who are key people at YCAP.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I'm Laverne Pitts, Development Director at YCAP.
And I'm Amber Hansen-Moore, the Deputy Director for YCAP.
Oh, sorry. So one of the things that we'd like to note is, what the data has been showing us is that a lot of the individuals who were out in the camps, who had families or were sort of regulating the camps over the years, pre-COVID, we've now been able to house. So that is one of the reasons why, even though there are actually fewer people on the streets, the impact can seem a lot higher, because you no longer have those individuals who are actively cleaning up those camps, living in those camps. A lot of them have been moved through Project Turnkey, particularly focused on families and children. So the number of youth that we actually have, young children, have declined dramatically that are currently living on the streets. You just don't see as many kids anymore. When I first moved here in 2018, there were quite a few families with young children that were in those encampments. And that's been a major focus of YCAP, is to make sure that that's no longer the case, and move those families. So that's a significant number, because one family can be a lot of people. But what we're faced with now is you can still have a lot of camps, because they're individual camps, and you no longer have people within those encampments that are sort of regulating, making sure that, you know, trash is cleaned up, making sure that things are being taken care of appropriately. So the impact can still seem very large, even with a fewer number of people overall. And so that's really one of the takeaways that we've had. We originally thought last year was a bit of a fluke, in terms of the point in time count, but then looking at the data this year, when we did a very robust count, we're starting to see a real trend. And it's where Project Turnkey and some of these other interventions, like eviction prevention, things of that nature, have really taken hold to help prevent families from becoming homeless. But we still have a lot of individuals.
And a few things about the data itself. There's always limitations and strengths to any data set, obviously. So one of the limitations of the point in time data is that you're never going to be able to survey every single homeless person in the county. That's just not going to happen. Not every person's going to come out on that day and answer all those questions. So it is always underrepresented in that way of the actual number of people experiencing homelessness. I'd say its strength is that it is a person-to-person survey with those individuals. So if you sort of project the data, you have a fairly accurate picture of what the demographics of homelessness looks like. And the fact that we're seeing more people in shelters, and fewer people on the streets, but those that are unsheltered have much more significant barriers, seems reflective of what we observe.
There were quite a few people who refused to answer questions, or were unable to answer questions. When we went out on the point in time, I was with one group, and we surveyed 35 people that day. There were probably an additional 15 to 20 that did not, or were unable to answer our questions through a variety of reasons. And so again, that again refers, you know, references that the individuals who we're seeing, housing is not the only barrier. There's mental health, there's behavioral health. It's really going to take a more cohesive and collaborative approach, because housing is not the only issue that needs to be overcome for them to move successfully into stable housing. So that's really one of the key takeaways for us right now, is that those who are still there, it's just going to take a much stronger collaborative effort among all the different partners to address their barriers.
Thank you for being here. Does anyone want to ask them a direct question?
Yeah, thanks so much for being here. And this is a little unusual in our department head reports to kind of break away, but I appreciate you being here and providing answers. I know a lot of our counselors have had questions. I do have some data questions. I understand a couple things, and I would love to check them with you. One is that I understand from coordinated points of entry, that shows a 290% increase in our unhoused population, which is contrary to this data. So, but that data also comes from your organization. So that, you know, that leads to a very different understanding of our current unhoused population. So the second thing that I believe that I know, that I'd love clarity on, is that I understand that at this point in time count, this data was done with four drop-in sites around the whole county, one in West Valley, one in Dayton, one in McMinnville, and one in Newburgh. Whereas prior to 2021, all point in time counts had been countywide and inclusive of outlined camps, and that there was a broad outreach where people were going out to do camps, as opposed to expecting people to come in to be counted. And so that, to me, also informs kind of this data, what we're seeing. And then the third point is just, or the third question I have is just, based on my own experience and others in the community, you know, we've been seeing numbers that show us unhoused communities in the thousands, and this says 158 people. And to me, that's just not very, it's not very realistic, just even from a common sense standpoint. I know data is only, you know, data has certain limits to its value, but also knowing the tremendous number of service organizations, not just yours, that are serving this population, knowing the populations in our emergency overnight sheltering, this just, I, it worries me to see this as a reported number when, not just anecdotally, but all the other data we have shows much higher levels of an unhoused population, because, you know, because it scales the issue in front of us quite differently. So I guess I'm kind of looking, is that accurate? Did your coordinated points of entry show a 290% increase? Is that accurate? That the methodology was changed, and that there were four drop-in locations instead of countywide? And let me be clear, that is not a negative reflection on your agency in any way. I understand you lost your funding for this completely, and that when it came back, there were many issues layered on top of that, including a pandemic, and a volunteer force, and staffing, and all of these things. And I think there is danger in messaging to the community that there are only 158 people in the entire county that are unhoused, because we just know that's not accurate. And if that was accurate, and you had this many organizations working on that, it would seem unreasonable that we could not make a more significant impact. So.
Yeah. So to your first question about coordinated entry, that is throughout the course of a year, 12 months, how many calls we get requesting services from unduplicated individuals. So that means throughout the course of a year, YCAP had some type of interaction with that many people who are experiencing homelessness sometime throughout the course of the year. Whereas the point in time is a single night in January. So that's where it's severely limited in the scope and the volume that it's going to show. And that's why you have two drastically different numbers. And also part of the reason that we try to usually share both numbers, to show people the vast difference between a single night versus the number of people throughout the course of a year. And if you look even further at the number of people we provide rental assistance to who have eviction notices, it tells you even more how many people are on the brink of homelessness. So there's a lot of different data sets that can tell you different pieces of the full picture.
Can I add a little bit to that coordinated entry? That's also an indicative of how many more people we are helping. So originally, the data that we had from 2017 was we only were able to respond to 500 people that year. Last year, we responded to over 2,000. So that's, it's people who are contacting us, who we are able, who we are providing referrals or services to. So that's a service number of how many people we're helping. It's not a how many people are unsheltered on a particular night kind of data. And so that's why, that's a service number. So that's why it looks a little different. Also, that information includes sheltered individuals. So the number of people who are sheltered are actually significantly higher. So we have 158 unsheltered right now, but there's over 220 that are sheltered. So these are individuals who are within sheltering programs, like what we have at Turnkey, or the different shelters at the Mission, or other places who are all involved in this work, which if they weren't involved in this work, we would have an additional 200 people on the streets who were unsheltered. So we want to make sure that that's really clear. There are still 300, 400 people who are unhoused in our community, but it's a question of whether they're sheltered or unsheltered. And there's been a lot of progress made on getting people sheltered. So I want to make sure that that's really clear. And that's indicative of what that coordinated entry number is as well, because we're getting people into shelters, and we're obviously trying to build more so we can keep moving that ball forward.
So to make sure I understand, your coordinated points of entry count, which is in the thousands, shows people reaching out for services related to being unhoused. However, they are still included in that if they are in shelter, provided shelter?
If they're in shelter, they're in a different count. 158 are literally homeless on the street. 220 are in shelter. And then we also have precariously housed, which are the individuals who are, have received eviction notices, that we're working to keep them housed. So that 2,000 number includes all of that. And so that's why we try to sort of tease it out. But that's the total number that we're working with.
Yeah, the 158 that Counselor Manke mentioned was just those unsheltered, meaning places unmeant for human habitation. So they're not in a homeless shelter. They're sleeping outside in a car, something of that sort. Then there's 200 plus, 220 some, that were in homeless shelters. And again, that agreed to take the survey, because one homeless shelter told me, they had like 50 people come through, but they only had maybe 15 that agreed to take the survey. So there's a lot of fear and hesitation, I think, among the homeless population to share data.
Great.
And I believe you do talk about the ones that are sheltered in here somewhere, but I.
It's the last couple of pages, because it also compares, those that are sheltered and in homeless shelters, the rates of them, those who reported substance use disorders and health conditions was significantly lower than those who were unsheltered and reported the same thing. So even if you compare those who are homeless that are sheltered versus unsheltered, the barriers are much more significant for those outside and unsheltered than even for those who are inside at a homeless shelter.
Great. And then before I open it up, we are still on track to open our 36-bed emergency shelter this summer, and looking for occupancy, I believe this June, May or June, is that correct?
This summer, where you have later in the agenda an opportunity to discuss that further. But I also want to address your second question. We used street teams. So we had a street team in every part of the county. So we did do countywide. What we found in the past is when we had drop-in centers in some of the more rural communities, no one showed up. So they're not going to come to us, we have to go to them. So every single community in the entire county had street teams reaching out. We contacted law enforcement, the county sheriff, anybody and everybody we knew who was involved in this and who might know. And they were able to point us in the direction of where, even in Lafayette, where people, a small community where people are known to be homeless, so that we could try to target those areas without having drop-in locations. We, in the communities like McMinnville, and Newburgh, and Willamina, and Sheridan, where we did have a drop-in center, we also had a street team so that we could do both.
Great. Thank you. Other questions from council? Council President?
Yeah, thank you for coming tonight and presenting. It means a lot that you guys are here. You mentioned that in your group, about 35 participated and 15 to 20 didn't, which is 30 to 40% of the people that you actually contacted. Is that consistent with what you've seen in previous years? Or is that like a one-off this year, or what's?
I would say that's probably pretty consistent, although it might be a little higher, just because, again, the individuals that we're seeing have much significant barriers than what we had in the past. So the percentage who are unwilling to speak to us, or unable to speak to us, is likely higher as well, just because there's quite a few people who were unable to talk to us, or who were not in a position to talk to us. So that's just some things to keep in mind when looking at the data. So it will be an under-report, absolutely. We know there's, we know there's more than 158. But we know for sure there's 158, and we know what those demographics are for that group. And we can extrapolate based on that and anticipate that that would be similar, or that the ones that we didn't speak to probably have even higher barriers, which is why they were unwilling to talk to us. So that's.
And a follow-up to that, of that 30 to 40% that chose not to participate, do you, being, are your staff that are out in the community with them, are those the same individuals that choose not to engage in services like Operation Turnkey and other programs that you and other providers have, and they just kind of choose to be where they're at?
You're probably better.
That's difficult to say. So I also want to point to that, they're quoting the 25 or 30% number. I'm guessing you're comparing the point in time number to.
She said she talked to 35, and 15 to 20 chose not to talk to her.
About the number of people that we visited with on our, when we went around with our group.
Yes. So I will say that my opinion, and this is not based on statistics that I can pull from, but most people experiencing homelessness are aware of YCAP's services that are available to them and that they're eligible for. That is my opinion, and maybe I'm biased, because I work for YCAP, and I think we do a pretty good job of spreading the word. I also know word of mouth is something that is very, a common way to share information among people experiencing homelessness. So I doubt that there's too many that are unaware of what is available, at least at a base level, and would suspect that, yes, there are a significant number who are unwilling to engage in services for various reasons.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Other questions from the council right now? Counselor Gary?
No.
No. Counselor Chenoweth?
I think I'm, what I, I would love to have a sit-down, again, with you and the executive director, in a response to the email that I sent out to the executive director. But other than that, I think we have other business today, so I'm not going to ask my questions.
Ladies, I really appreciate you coming in and answering questions. I know it was kind of on the fly, but I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. We really appreciate the support of the ADP McMinnville site. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. We're happy to have you here. And Laverne, I am forwarding you the grant that I saw on developing recreational open space for the backyard there.
Okay. Further on, on my committees, McMinnville Affordable Housing meets tomorrow. We're going to do a quick summary of state legislation on transitional housing, a review of different models of transitional housing, temporary structure, tiny homes, standard residential homes, as supportive shelters. We're going to highlight some of the development regulations from these other cities to consider, like Bend, Redmond, and Bellevue. We have several good examples, and hopefully we'll have some people actually speaking from those areas. Currently, McMinnville Land Use Code of Application for these types of housing and accommodations, such as emergency shelters, social relief facilities, and single-room occupancy. And lastly, I request special input from the Affordable Housing Committee to help understand how to move forward in this item for the April meeting. So this is going to be a discussion and kind of an ongoing project for, I imagine, several months. That's what I got today.
That's what you've got. Wonderful. Thank you. Counselor Chenoweth?
Parkway Committee met. Thank you, Mayor. Parkway Committee met, and some bad news was brought to us. The Community Workforce Agreement, I believe, is under suit now, that was holding up Phase 2A, which is the interchange where the Dundee bypass that is currently built meets 219. It has, we've been waiting two years to get that agreement. We finally had an agreement in place, but now it's held up again. ODOT is working to try to get a PLA in place separate from that, so that we can hopefully get this project that is funded. Just needs an agreement to get moving and actually get built, done. And they are scrambling. They're working hard to try to make this happen. It's going to take two years of actual construction time to get it done. They need two seasons. So they got to hurry up and get this thing to bid, so that they can start it this year to hopefully be done by the end of next year, because we do have some funding. end of next year, because we do have some funding issues that could end up expiring on us and losing some of the funding that's already in place. So fingers crossed that this all goes well and we move forward.
Yeah, they're talking June, I believe.
Yeah, they're hoping to get to bid in June.
They're hoping to go to bid.
Yeah. And that's all of my other committees, counsel postponed or coming up shortly.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Gary?
Thank you. You heard from Counselor Manke on affordable housing. MIRAC is scheduled for next week. DEIAC, you guys caught up to speed on it from the work session we had, which we heard kind of a preview of that and got to work on the first meeting with them. Stormwater utility, we met to shore up the suite of recommendations at the committee level, and we'll work on bringing that back to this body before too long. And those are my committees, and that's my update.
And thank you, council president.
Thank you, Mayor. Start with the Fire District. We yesterday took delivery of the ambulance that was purchased by the city with ARPA dollars that we authorized back in 2021, I believe. So it's been a long time coming with some supply chain delays. We also extended job offers to a new finance person and an administrative services director. That'll, she has a bright swath of duties, so, but she'll handle HR and a bunch of things on the administrative side. They'll be coming on board here in a few weeks. Appreciate all the department heads throughout the city that have helped out, especially HR Director Hedges, Jeff Towery, and Finance Director Koyer on all the things they've done to help us transition. Visit McMinnville. Had a board meeting last week. It wasn't as rosy as a lot of our meetings are, but that's the reality of the travel business these days. There is, the budget for this fiscal year is trending a little lower than expected by about $84,000. So we've adjusted expenses to compensate for that, as well as going into fiscal year '25. Instead of the typical 5% growth, we're thinking we're going to have more of a 3% growth. January was pretty rough for the travel industry in general, and this isn't an Oregon-specific issue. This is just a travel industry as a whole. I think some of that pent-up demand you had from COVID and that spike you saw in travel is kind of leveling out to a more predictable future. Our room revenue is still growing strongly. Just the occupancy isn't as high as it could be, but it's still very strong. Steve Rupp introduced a project called Bird Calls, which takes a converted phone booth that plays bird calls when buttons are pushed on the telephone keypad. He asked for a contribution for that, and he's going to meet with the MDA and the Third Street Committee and come back to us. Other than that, YCOM hasn't met, and Airport Commission hasn't met since our last meeting. And anything else that I share with you and committees, I'll defer to you to report on.
Thank you so much. We have submitted our community-initiated projects or congressionally-directed spending requests, however you would like to refer to them, previously known as earmarks to the federal government, for two projects this year. One is related to a sewer upgrade. And so there is a pipe that transitions from being a 48-inch pipe to two 21-inch pipes about a half a mile away from the Northwest Rubber Site. And so that's a consideration given the potential for density of housing on that site. So one of our asks is to the federal government to help us replace that sewer pipe. We are partnering in that by contributing to upgrade the stormwater system at the same time. So we will dig once and fix twice, and so stay up to date on that. And then the other project is what I mentioned earlier, which is a sidewalk repair program for low-income neighborhoods. Visit McMinnville also hosted a nonprofit called Here to Stay that empowers our BIPOC community members to visit places where they may not have previously felt comfortable. I was happy to join Visit McMinnville to welcome the nonprofit and many guests over this past weekend. We also have been approached by a gentleman, a McMinnville resident, who learned about the Mayor's Institute on City Design Program that Heather, Jeff, and I are engaged in at Harvard Graduate School of Design, to offer up a LOEB Fellowship Alumni Council to dedicate their services also to the city of McMinnville for potential future programming. So we've been meeting with them and internally to understand the grant, what it could do, and what expertise it could bring to McMinnville to help inform future programming. And then we have as a follow-up from our joint meeting with the school board, we believe that there will be draft language in front of the council by the second meeting in April that will address both safety zones or extension zones around schools, and we'll also explore the use of the word "established" in code. So that will be at the second, second meeting in April. And then lastly, for all of our volunteers out there that also have young children at home, and some of the work we were doing recently, we came across this great nonprofit, Oregon-based nonprofit organization called Politicit. And it is a parent-to-parent volunteer childcare to, that's provided so that parents of young children are able to attend city council meetings, school board meetings, serve on boards, et cetera. And they have some impressive stats for how many folks they have supported in getting out and getting civically engaged. So that's called Politicit. And if you are listening and a parent and you need help with childcare in order to be civically engaged, I encourage you to check out their website until we have more solutions for that internally. Other than it being your birthday, Mr. Towery, I would invite you to share other important information. I do also just want to note that I wore two City of McMinnville lapel pins tonight, one newer one and one older one, which also, I think, is very, I wore this not to say that you were old, as you asked, but to really signify a lot of transition that you have brought the city through. And so this new logo, this new lapel pin, this new imagery, it's really tied up in a lot of the work that you've done here over the last about, what, seven, you're seven years now, over the last seven years, including the development of a strategic plan for the city of McMinnville and kind of bringing McMinnville into the future. And so, you know, I could have gone overboard and worn three lapel pins for past, present, and future, but I got us partway there. And with that, please tell us what our future holds, sir.
Thank you, everyone, for the well wishes. I appreciate it. It's an auspicious number. I will tell you that. And I got a video from my granddaughter Googling at me for my birthday, which is lovely. I'm apologizing for the sticky table, if it's sticky up there. I mean, I've gotten it cleaned off well enough. In addition to the item that the mayor mentioned, there were two other items of follow-up that came out of your joint meeting with the school board last week. We're in the process of scheduling a meeting with Director Manfrin and Superintendent Brockett and I, probably sometime in the next couple of weeks, since this is spring break. We'll report back to the bodies after we have that meeting about opportunities for collaboration moving forward. We're also in the process of gathering a full record of the conversations around after-school care that we've, that we've provided to the council and the school board over the last couple of years to set up a conversation. We've provided three dates in June for another joint meeting with the school board, and waiting to hear back on that. Also, we'll note that, for the record, the Board of County Commissioners approved the intergovernmental agreement for mobile healthcare service expansion with the city of McMinnville. We're thrilled about that. Appreciate the partnership with the Board of Commissioners, as well as the Health and Human Services staff. Their team has, has been excited. They actually started doing some of the work even before we had a signed contract, which was nice. And one of the things that they've done is they've been doing some outreach to businesses downtown. They either have or will be meeting with the newly re-established block captains program that the MDA is rejuvenating. And we will continue to meet with our staff team and the HHS leadership team on a quarterly basis. They'll also be providing reports, status reports on the program on a quarterly basis, and we'll bring those reports both to the council, as well as our funding partner, McMinnville Industrial Promotions. And we want to thank them for their support of this program as well. And that's all I have to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney, David Leitnerberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing from the legal department tonight.
Thank you. Community Development Director, Heather Richards?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I'm going to take advantage of having Jody Christensen here with us tonight to talk about a project that she's working on for the city. It's our innovation campus, the public infrastructure feasibility analysis and the master planning. That RFP or RFQ, Request for Qualifications, was out. We just closed it. We got five qualified consultant teams. We're reviewing those right now. Three of them, three of them, we invited back for interviews because we thought all three were really competitive and would do a great job on that project, and we wanted to explore it a little bit further with them. So we're excited about the response for that and to get that project underway. It will include, just to remind you, three components, really. Master planning for the full 200 acres that is south of Highway 18 that's vacant, that is our three-mile lane area plan for both the commercial and the innovation campus concept. We'll do three scenarios, a low-density, medium-density, and high-density scenario, and then choose one. And then we'll do a public infrastructure analysis, what type of public infrastructure is needed to support those scenarios, assuming it's going to be higher density than originally planned in our public facility plans. We'll develop a capital improvement project list from that, and also look at funding sources for those capital improvements. And then we're going to do a marketing component as well. We got a grant from Business Oregon to help us with that, to help market the project into the business community. So we're excited for the project to get underway.
Excellent. And don't you have new staff in your department as well?
Yes, I do. And I'm going to bring them to a council meeting here in the near future. But we did fill three of our existing planning vacancies over the last six weeks. And so it's exciting to see them as members of the team and have the team full again. And they're great hires, if you ask me. I'm excited. They're very thoughtful. They've come from other communities and are bringing sort of their thoughts and lens from those other communities. But they chose to come to McMinnville because they're excited about the community and they're excited about the planning we're doing here.
Thank you so much.
Just as a comment, I've sat in committees with two of them, Evan Hibbatus, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, and then Taylor Graylor. They're both great, really very thoughtful, good people.
Thank you. Anything additional from you, Jody Christensen, Special Projects Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a matter before you later in the meeting.
All right. Thank you. Jeff, with a G, Hunsler, Public Works Director?
Nothing to report this evening.
All right. Vicki Hedges, Human Resources Manager?
So I recently completed a pay equity study for the city. And this work is different than the classification study that we did in 2021. That classification study that was done then established our new salary schedules and structure for pay. This project was really structured around meeting the requirements for the Oregon Pay Equity Law and also established updated job descriptions for all employees. So I now can say every employee has an up-to-date job description. That's exciting. Out of that work, we had a few pay adjustments, a few to full-time and a few to part-time, but nothing significant out of that work. So that's good news that the city's been largely compliant with that pay equity requirement, even without that review in place.
Great. Thank you. Daniel Ruiz, Deputy City Recorder?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Claudia Sisneros, City Recorder?
Nothing to report.
All right. Thank you so much. It occurred to me, we also did planning commission interviews. Put that out there. That'll be coming forward. We'll now move to the part of the evening where we take public comment. Any interested audience members are invited to provide comments, and any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing today or at some future date. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. If you're on Zoom and you wish to speak, please use the raise-your-hand feature. And when your turn is up, we will announce your name and unmute your mic. Or you may also send a chat directly to our city recorder and we'll announce you. If you are giving public testimony tonight, please announce your name and the city you live in for the record. And also, please remember to fill out a public comment card to submit to the city recorder prior to leaving for the record. And do we have anyone signed up for public comment tonight?
Yes. Well, first, we'll start with John Gallup.
Welcome. Thank you so much for being here. Yeah, if you don't mind, you can come and join us at the table here. A clock will appear on the screen behind me, so you can watch your own time. It's nicer that way, we've found. And so just as a reminder, if you'll start, by stating your name and the city you live in for the record.
Sure. My name is John Gallup, and I live in McMinnville. And I want to thank you, Mayor, and the councilors for the opportunity to visit with you this evening. And, oh, a little bit closer there, sorry. And Manager Jack, happy birthday. We got to have our cake and eat it, too. So that's a pretty good thing. I live here in the city, and I've lived in the county for about 20 years. And my, I'm recently retired. My background is insurance and auto claims. And I'm also a retired volunteer fire chief after 15 years of service to my community. I'm here tonight because I'm really concerned about vehicles racing and running through town at high rates of speed, speed contests, things like that. It's, it's gotten more and more over the last year. At first, it seemed like it was just noise. And then I, you know, I'm awakened because I hear these things, and I hear motorcycles and four-wheel drive, you know, or vehicles with four wheels going through multiple gears. And so I know it's not just noise. It's cars that are, you know, exceeding speed limits, like by great degrees. You can hear motorcycles that, when they go into high RPMs, like at, you know, five, six gears, that they're in their 70s to even the hundreds. And here recently, about 2:20 in the morning on a weeknight, I was awakened to vehicles racing through the neighborhoods. And I live in the West Hills, you know, say, right on horizon across, you know, from Hill Road. And one vehicle was chasing another, and I saw them. And this one vehicle sped up the hill and went around the corner sideways. And the vehicle that was chasing or racing him in my neighborhood that's posted 25 miles an hour turned around quickly in a neighbor's driveway after almost going through his yard and went off and did some things. Pretty concerning. I, you know, I'm not law enforcement, but I would guess that we were probably talking 60, 70 miles an hour in that neighborhood. This just seems to keep happening, and there's no real pattern, but it will be nothing for two or three nights, and then all of a sudden, they're just all over town. So it seems like maybe they're using ways to communicate and just go through. And it goes, usually starts about 11:30 at night and goes until 2:30 or 3:00 in the morning. So I just wanted to voice that. We could use law enforcement. I hear stories about it's hard to enforce noise, but I don't think it's hard to enforce when people are recklessly driving and speeding and racing through your neighborhoods. That's a bad thing coming. Thank you.
Thank you for your time and your prior service. And I think our Fire District is also still accepting volunteer applications if you find yourself with time on your hands. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
And next, we have Mark Shepherd.
Good evening. Welcome. Thank you for coming.
Good evening. Happy birthday. My name is Mark Shepherd, and I live here in McMinnville. My name is Mark Shepherd, and I live here in McMinnville. We moved here about three and a half years ago. And we live in the Grand Haven neighborhood. And I appreciate the council and the mayor giving me a couple of minutes. I, too, want to speak to you about traffic in McMinnville. I'm a retired law enforcement officer after serving 22 years. I regularly see and hear vehicles incredibly exceeding speed limits here in town.
Can you speak to your mic a little better?
Sorry. I hear them regularly at night and during the day. We live very close to Grand Haven Elementary. That puts us about a half a mile west of OR 99. And I can hear vehicles starting up at about McDonald and traveling toward Lafayette, going through the gears. It's just incredible, the amount of speed that's gained through there and the noise. I can hear them in my home with the windows closed on 99. About, well, it was last weekend, I heard vehicles coming down my street, posted 25. I got up and walked outside on the front porch, and I saw two of these vehicles racing down my residential street. They were probably doing 60 miles an hour, and they were side by side, racing each other on my street. Last weekend, on Saturday night, I heard a car braking very hard in front of my home, and I went outside to see them taking off around the corner. I went out Sunday morning, and I measured 60 feet of skid mark in front of my home. And this happens regularly. The noise is really deafening. These cars are all running around with modified exhaust systems. And I would ask that you see it, as I do, as it is a, it's a community issue, and it's a quality of life issue. We're sheltered in our homes, and we can't open our windows at night because of this. I can't sleep at night. Many times, I'm woken up by these cars. So I would ask that you provide some guidance and some resources to our police department to help them address this issue. I think some targeted enforcement would help. But we need to get out there and address it. And I think it needs to be aggressively addressed. Somebody's going to get hurt. But again, it's a quality of life issue for me and for my neighbors. So I thank you.
Thank you. And thank you as well for your service. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And next, we have William Sykes.
Good evening and welcome back.
Thank you.
You got it.
Thank you, esteemed council and others. I'm William Sykes from McMinnville. And my topic, like others, is loud vehicles racing around town. I quote the McMinnville Municipal Code 810-260 for vehicle noises. The use of any vehicle or engine, either stationary or moving, in a manner that causes or creates any loud or unnecessary grating, grinding, rattling, or other noise, including the discharge in the open air of exhaust of any steam engine, internal combustion engine, motorboat, or motor vehicle, except through a muffler or through a device which will effectively prevent loud or explosive noises and the emission of annoying smoke. I approached the council on this topic December 12, 2023, January 23, and February 27. I trust my messages were well received. Thank you to the news register for covering this. After January 27 meeting, Chief Scales reached out. Thank you, Mayor Drabkin and Chief Scales. I will let Chief Scales describe the response, but it's clear to me that there are many hurdles here, including lack of staffing, unclear ordinances and/or laws, and no abilities to measure the sound or even write a ticket. If I drive my vehicle with a broken taillight or expired tags, I get pulled over and ticketed. But if I modify my exhaust and make it sound like a machine gun and rip up and down Third Street, nothing happens to me. Nothing. It's going to be a long summer, and drag the gut has already begun. Since last we spoke, there are even more folks ripping around with these modified systems. I and others believe that this is affecting the walkability in McMinnville. Have you heard it yet? Have you heard the pop, pop, pop that sounds like gunfire? If not, then you will hear it. These folks are racing around town. This is noise pollution plus dangerous exhibition of speed. We at StopTheNoiseMac.com are already 40 proud and growing. I have some questions unanswered from the last time to leave with you again. Number one, who will help us here from the city council? We're looking for a hero. Can someone from the city help us understand if these folks are in fact in violation of Municipal Code 810-260 or some other law? Number three, what is the preferred way to report this behavior to the city? Number four, are the call logs from YCOM available to the public? Please, City Council, let us continue this conversation about noise pollution in McMinnville. There are solutions that should be considered. Please join us at StopTheNoiseMac.com. StopTheNoiseMac.com. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you so much. Do you know if additional public comment are on traffic?
That was everyone who signed up.
Okay. Real quick, before I call more, can you just, City Manager Howery, can you just report out on our current hiring status with the PD as the staffing levels have been, are direct, are part of the relationship here?
Yes. I think so. I had a conversation with the chief yesterday, and we have three positions, either with conditional or unconditional offers. We've got three or four other applicants in various stages of the interview and backgroundings. I think we have a total of eight vacancies.
All right. Thank you. And just for the council and my own benefit, we have started using a recruitment system with the PD, or perhaps you would like to address that, Manager Hedges?
I really apologize. I cannot remember the name of the company, so I feel bad. Jeff, you might have that.
All-Star.
All-Star talent.
All-Star talent. Yes. So the police department is working with All-Star talent to really boost our recruitment efforts, particularly around social media. So I'm not sure if you've perused social media lately, but I personally have seen the posts for recruitment. That has created a big uptick in our applications for our police department positions. So that seems to be working. I don't have the data yet, but it does seem to be creating a rise in application numbers.
Okay. I know that's only one piece of the puzzle, but I figured it was relevant and timely to share out. Council President?
Just for perspective, Manager Hedges, the eight vacancies is about 25% of our police force, warrant officers, or? Thank you. I thought we had around 30 or 33.
I feel like it's around 30, but I can't remember specifically the total number of officer positions versus sergeant, corporals, those kinds of things.
And then for the birthday man, when we get to full staffing, will we get that street team back in place that's kind of designed to deploy for situations like this?
So I know that the, one of the programs the chief wants to reestablish is the Community Response Unit. And that group will be able to address a number of hot issues. The one that you heard about is one of them, would, I think, be on the list. But I know that's something the chief would like to be able to reestablish.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you, everybody, for speaking tonight.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to provide public comment to the council this evening?
Wonderful.
Wonderful. And I just need to make sure you sign a comment card before you leave, but please join us. You can, you can give your public comment first. We just need to get you to sign that. If you'll come up and sit down, be sure to speak into the microphone and state the name, your name and the city you live in for the record. Before you begin, we would appreciate it.
Okay. My name is Dan Hilbert. I live in McMinnville. I want to address also these loud noises coming from these cars. Although some action has been taken in the past, it's not enough. They're still speeding, and they have illegal mufflers. What they do, I think, is they disconnect the regular muffler, so they just have the catalytic converter. And when they, when they slow the car down, it makes that pop, pop, pop sound. And it's all, you can hear it, you know, you can hear it five blocks away. And this went on quite a lot during the last two years, and nobody did anything about it. But I have a suggestion that someone from the police department in the Public Affairs Unit, reach out to apartment managers and have them require anyone, any tenant that resides in the apartment must have legal mufflers, so as not to disturb other tenants. So another thing, too, this will have an effect on those who visit McMinnville. If we, if we can do something about this, then we'll have those people who visit McMinnville leave to their hometowns with something nice to say about McMinnville. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hilbert. Nice to see you again. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to provide public comment for the council this evening? And is there anyone on Zoom that would like to provide public comment for the council this evening? And is there anyone on the phone? All right. Thank you so much. We will now go to the, we will now invite up the General Manager of McMinnville Water and Light, John Dietz. As a reminder, a part of the communal work that was done before the city council and McMinnville Water and Light, quarterly updates between the administrative heads to both bodies are a part of our regular way of keeping the two bodies connected. Thank you so much for being here, and thank you for waiting through us through the earlier part of the meeting.
Thanks, Mayor. Next slide. I guess we'll start. So we'll talk a little bit about, these are the topics we're going to talk about.
Will you lean into your mic a little for the?
Is that better?
That's better. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll just go ahead and start with the next slide, Claudia. So our website, we have updated our website, so that went live on, back in February. And so that has, project has been completed. That was a pretty successful project, so we're pretty happy with that. No hitches that I know of, so another successful project that we've had. Next slide, Claudia. We completed our project out on Marsh Lane. I think we had about 700 tons of rock we placed along Marsh Lane. That project, I think, was a successful project. We've, we've seen a reduction in, obviously, we don't have any tents on the street right now, so that has been hopefully successful. And our employees do appreciate the fact that they don't have to drive through the, the human waste and all the other debris that was out on the street prior. So that project's been completed. Next slide. Winter storm this year. So we had one outage this winter that affected about 106 customers. But south of us, they had a four-day event damage period. Springfield, Eugene area, Lane County, the last report I have is that Springfield alone lost, or had damaged or destroyed trees somewhere in the 20,000. Trees were destroyed or damaged in Springfield. We had a crew there for 13 days, six-man crew, so essentially, half of our line staff was, was there. And took some lessons home from that one as well. What we're going to adapt and change in our, in our strategy as well, because one of the things that we saw was that was not a good communications path that they were using, that utility was using. So we actually asked our staff what things that we should be looking at and changing in our response to these types of storms and events. So I think that went pretty well for us. But the last estimate I have from Springfield Utility Board is the damage somewhere in the range of $8 million is what they're up to right now. So I think more to come on that one as well. So we've also taken a little bit different approach. One of the things that we have done to help alleviate some of these things is we've increased our tree trimming. So currently, we now have one and a half crews. We used to have one crew year round. Now we have 1.5 crew year round, or pretty much year round, doing tree trimming. That's primarily not only tree trimming, but actually proactively going out and asking customers if they see trees or they may potentially have a problem. We'll be, we'll be more than happy to take them down if they're in the right of way or if they're threatening the line, power lines. So something that we've tried to do. And then the other thing we noticed, our crews noted, was that there was some issues with pole strengths in that area. They saw quite a few poles that were, had rot in them. So again, we're going to start our pole test and treat program back up again. So we do that over a three-year period, and we go through our entire system and basically drill every pole at the ground level to make sure that there's, it's not rot. There's no rot in the pole, and then treat the pole. And that also extends the life. That gives about a 50-year life for that, for that asset. Our goal is to try and change about 2% of those poles a year to keep that asset in a good, in a good situation. So, next slide. This is some of the damage that our crews actually worked on. That's our crew in the lower left down at Springfield. But you can see, they had about, our crew estimates somewhere between an inch and a half and two inches of ice on everything, which in our area, our low, what we call the loading district for our facilities is about a half an inch. So our designs are some for about a half an inch of ice. So that caused quite a bit of problems for, for Springfield. Next slide. So looking ahead. So, go ahead. Next slide. One of the challenges that we're going to face coming up is our wholesale power contract comes up for renewal. Our current contract ends in 2028, so we're right now negotiating our current, our new contract, what we call post-2028. That's going to see some significant changes in power supply. Currently, the federal system is essentially at capacity, meaning that there is no, what we call tier-one power available at the current tier-one price. Any power resources above tier-one are somewhere around $62 a megawatt hour. That's the wholesale price. Our current tier-one price is about $35 a megawatt hour. And so the ice storm we had back in January, power prices were at or exceeding what they call the soft cap, which is the FERC cap. That's $1,000 a megawatt hour. And there was one utility that was buying on the open market at any price because they did not have supply. So a lot of that power came through California, through the Southwest. And that was an additional $300 million that Bonneville had to pay for that power. So we'll be, there's a fairly high likelihood that we will see what they call a financial reserves policy, where they're basically going to come back to us and ask for additional, additional funds to cover some of those costs. That's one issue. Then we've got Columbia River Treaty, what we call AK the Colum, Canadian entitlement. That is about 10% of our wholesale power cost. And what that is, is back when the treaty was, was signed with Canada back in the early 1960s, the United States agreed to send power to Canada in exchange for storage rights, which means Canada built three large reservoirs to store water for, and help flood control and power. And we paid for that by sending them power back to the, back to Canada. That Canadian entitlement still exists, and we're overpaying that entitlement right now. So right now, we're paying about $300 million a year to Canada for power, or sending them about $300 million in power. In reality, that's probably more like 30 million is really the actual, what they should be receiving today for that benefit. But the federal government has not finished negotiating the new But the federal government has not finished, uh, negotiating the new treaty. So we continue to pay that cost. Another item, residential exchange. That's another item that's about 14% of our power costs. These are all wholesale power costs. These are added on to the wholesale cost. That is, uh, was back in, that was created back in 1980. The Northwest Power Act created what they call residential exchange, which is an exchange of benefits for the federal system to the investor-owned utilities. So the investor-owned utilities get a share of the, um, benefits of the federal system. And that was specifically to go to res- small residential or residential customers and small farms. So that is another portion of our power costs as well. And right now, we're overpaying for that as well. Uh, that right now is about $286 million a year is what's in our power cost that goes to essentially the investor-owned utilities. Portland General Electric, Pacific Power, Idaho, Idaho Power, Puget Sound Energy and Avista are the, are the ones. Uh, water supply, uh, we're looking at, um, not a great water year right now. We're at 85% of normal. And really where most of our water comes from is Canada, up in the Upper Rockies. And that's why the large storage reservoirs are up there. So we're hoping that that will improve before the, the spring runoff. And the spring runoff will start pretty much anytime now. Just waiting as soon as the weather starts to warm a little bit. Again, like I mentioned before, contract negotiations, we're looking at, Bonneville's proposing a 20-year term. The other item that's going to affect power costs is what they call the litigation stay. That is the Columbia River System Operations Law, uh, litigation that's been going on for, since 2001. Uh, there was an agreement with the federal government, uh, and the six sovereigns, which would be the states of, uh, Washington, Oregon, the three lower river, or four lower river tribes are what they call the sovereigns. Uh, that cost over 10 years for power customers is right now about $300 million. That'll go into our power rates as well. And then the last item on power is about 25 to 30% of our power costs, and these are wholesale again, are tied to fish and wildlife mitigation. That would be, uh, foregone, um, generation because of spill or any wild, any habitat mitigation. Impacts for us going forward, uh, currently, we're waiting to see our draft integrated resource plan. This is a plan that will really drive where we're going to get our resources going for, for, for the next 20 years. We're estimating right now that over the next planning horizon, we're going to need an additional 20 megawatts of capacity. And where we're going to get that? Currently, like I mentioned before, tier-one costs are right now $35 a megawatt hour. Tier-two costs are about 62. So that's, tier-two is anything above what we call our contract high watermark. And then the other item that is, um, continuing on is the potential removal of the four lower Snake River dams. And those dams provide about an, uh, 1,000 ever, average megawatts. And about 3,000 to 4,000 average or megawatts of capacity. So very significant. And those are resources that are essentially, we can rely on pretty much 24/7. Uh, they also balance what we call the intermittent or, um, the intermittent renewable resources. That would be wind and solar. Those are, those are resources that are not, uh, reliable or essentially, we cannot rely on them when we need the, the power. And so what they do is they marry, what they call, we marry those resources with another resource like a, a hydro plant or a gas, gas-fired so that we can ramp, we call ramp, ramp the, um, that generation up while the other generation is ramping down. And then the other, probably the big, big impact to rates is inflation. We're seeing significant increases in cost of materials. So those, those, those things have not really hit our rates yet, um, but they are coming. So, next slide. Go, go ahead.
Could you go back over this lower, potential lower Snake River? Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. Could you go over the potential lower Snake River dam removal? Is that, that's hurting us, is what you're saying?
It, it could potentially hurt us because if they remove that, if, if that gets removed, that's 1,000 megawatts that has to be replaced with something else. Those four, those four projects are actually the lowest-cost projects in the federal system. They average somewhere between $10 and $15 a megawatt hour. Uh, wind and/or solar, we would be looking at somewhere between 90 and 100. But then we would also need a second resource with that because they're not reliable. They're intermittent resources. They're on or they're off depending on time of day.
Why are they removing the dam?
Because they're, they're arguing that that will help salmon restoration.
Let me add to this and please correct me if I'm wrong, but the removal of the dams would require an act of Congress.
Yes.
And at this point is at least, is potentially decades away. Um, what the treaty doesn't clarify, if I'm correct, what the treaty doesn't clarify is who all will take on the additional cost burden of the replacement power and, and the-
That's not the treaty. It's, it's the, the contract with BPA.
Okay, thank you. And so I know that is, uh, that is a big area of consideration. Will the cost of the replacement power be spread out, uh, kind of across, uh, across the US or will that be all on the backs of local ratepayers? And so that is a, a large consideration related to the future of the Snake River dams.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a couple of questions on that?
Go for it. Councilor Chenoweth.
Thank you, Mayor. When you say average is 1,000 megawatts, per what? Per day, per month?
Uh, that is, uh, that's basically on all the time. So seven, 8,760 hours in a year. So that would be 1,000 average megawatts pretty much every hour of every day.
And to help me understand, what does the city of McMinnville utilize?
We're about, our peak is 180. So that would be a city about the size of Seattle is what that would run.
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, just for a local reference, what does the Waste Management incinerator produce?
Uh, Riverband produces about 3 megawatts.
Okay.
So much, much smaller, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, go on.
So one of the things we, we looked at is, uh, we, we compare ourselves. These are actually the recent rate increases of the investor-owned utilities and Water and Light. So you can see the drivers that are going on right now. So the investor-owned utilities have a little bit different requirement than we do because we're locally controlled. So they are, um, regulated by the PUC where we are regulated by our local board. So they have, uh, requirements for essentially, uh, clean energy, which we already have. We're 96% carbon-free here, where they are generating a significant portion of their, their portfolios with coal and natural gas. So their costs are going to escalate even faster because they're going to be looking for resources that are carbon-free. And right now, the only resources available in Oregon are, that would be carbon-free, are wind and solar. Uh, nuclear, new nuclear is, or nuclear period is banned in Oregon right now. And so there, there are no other carbon-free resources except maybe small things like, um, you know, geothermal or, um, maybe, uh, some additional other landfills, gas projects, but those are all very small. And we are seeing significant load growth in the Hillsborough area now due to AI. And there is, we're looking at Portland General's looking at, in their queue right now, 3,500 megawatts of new interconnects. And their tire system right now is 4,500 megawatts. And that is all driven in the Hillsborough area.
And is that where there have been some recent denials for extended power as well?
Yes. And there's-
Do you expand on that?
Yeah, there, there is, um, one utility right now, Forest Grove Light and Power, which is another consumer-owned utility similar to us. They had a request in for 90 meg, 190 megawatts, and it was for two server farms, though that request was denied because there is not enough transmission capacity in, in the BPA system right now to handle that load. And so that, uh, that was a pretty big hit to them. That's about $10 million a year to their general fund. So they're trying to figure out what to do. And BPA said essentially it would take them 15 years to get the capacity for those projects.
Is there any, uh, the wave generation thing, does that produce any power that's meaningful?
No, not really. The, the other struggle with, you know, we, there's a lot of talk about offshore wind. The problem is there's no transmission to the coast that can handle that. So again, transmission would need to be built to handle those, those new resources.
Additional questions at this time, or we can let John go on?
Is there larger incinerator power plants throughout the country? I know Waste Management was like a pilot thing, but do they build them where they can produce?
Yeah, there's one, I think actually in Arlington, Oregon. So they have another plant there. I think it's a little bigger. It's like six megawatts. But they're not, they're not-
Pretty tiny.
They're not the hundreds of megawatts that, uh, a typical gas-fired plant, uh, just a small one is about 250 megawatts combined cycle. That means that it's, it recycles steam, so you get higher efficiency out of it. Um, that's a sta- a kind of a standard build would be that size. And compare that with nuclear. So there's a roughly 100 nuclear plants in the United States. They produce about 20, 18 to 20% of the total electric electricity generated every year from 100, from around 100 plants. So pretty big, big, um, generators. We have one in the Northwest, uh, Columbia Generating. It produces about 1,100 megawatts. And it's, you know, it's a, what we call a base load resource. It's just on and you, you leave it on and you run it. It doesn't go on and off to match with the wind or solar.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any others? Um, so right now, uh, we just completed, uh, we had an emergency repair on our drain valve for Haskins Reservoir. Uh, the frame had cracked and failed, so the contractor just completed that. So we're refilling that reservoir right now. And we actually inspected at the same time. We inspected annually, so we just inspected it as, as well. Transmission main, uh, our phase-three engineering is complete and phase-four engineering is 90% complete. So we're looking, hopefully, to go out to bid for phase-three next year. Uh, like we said, zone two, I know the mayor's familiar with that one. And then one other one that we have out on the street right now, it's not up here, is our raw, raw water line. That's the line that feeds from Haskins Reservoir to our treatment plant. That one is actually on the street right now and we're hoping to see bids, I think, next week. We'll be looking at replacing that steel pipe with a, what we call an HDP, High Density Polyethylene Pipe. That'll be a 36-inch pipe. And then our capital budgets, you can see our capital budgets have significantly increased over the previous years. We're up to, for the two, two, uh, divisions, we're up to a little over $20 million in capital coming up. And that's it. Any other questions?
Thank you. Any additional questions? Councilor Menke.
Going back to the transmission main replacement project, you say not till next year would you actually begin the engineering on that?
No, construction.
Or construction on it?
Right.
How long would that's likely to take?
Uh, phase-three will probably take three months to four months. But overall, there's eight phases of that project. We've completed two of the eight. Phase-three is, is the engineering's done and we're in the process of trying to get easements now. I think there's three, two or three property owners for that, for that phase. And then there, I think there's one property owner for the next phase. And so we're hoping to have that done this year and be on the street for construction next year. And that one will have, that one's a priority because we have, um, one of our mains is actually exposed in Baker Creek. So it's-
Say it again.
It's exposed, meaning that you can see the main in the creek.
Oh, yeah, that would be good.
Yeah, so that one's a priority for us and we want to get that. Well, that one will have to be probably, um, I don't think it'll have to be horizontal, horizontally-directional drill. I think we can do an open cut on that, but that might be an option if we have to. We'll have to, to essentially bore it.
Will there be an additional reservoir up in the, where you, where you're replacing the pump stay or the pump itself?
Uh, the original design had a second, a third, I guess it'd be a fifth reservoir. Uh, but what we did is we actually eliminated the reservoir by, um, essentially increasing the pumping si- pump size so that we can keep pressure. But as we replace the transmission main, the, uh, flow to the service reservoir is actually going to get better because the size of the pipe is actually going to get larger. So our goal for replacement of that transmission main is to have it essentially capable of handling our entire watershed. Maximum daily, uh, production out of the watershed is 30 million gallons. And we're going to, we want to flow the entire 30 million gallons through the new pipe when we're done, is the goal. So that will actually help zone two. Long-term, we have the property up there to build the reservoir, but right now, we don't actually need the reservoir. So we're not going to do that. So that really cut the cost of, of building that substantially.
Thank you, fascinating. Appreciate the information.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Council President?
I have a few. John, you mentioned on the ice storm updating the communications plan. Was that customer-facing or internal communication?
Uh, customer. So actually, one of the things that we're working on is what we call a crisis communication, crisis communications plan. So that we can actually, we have a plan set up before we actually have an issue.
Awesome. Thank you. And then you mentioned pole replacement at, at 2% a year. Is that what we've been seeing on like 25th Street and going out Baker Creek?
Uh, yeah, up, uh, West Side Road, not West Side Road, but I guess what's up near Britannal Lane there?
Yeah.
Yeah. We're actually going, we're actually, um, replacing that line. We're upgrading the conductor because our goal is to bring a loop back around the backside.
Okay.
And so that we can actually serve that, um, around the backside.
And you might not know this number off the top of your head, but what percentage of our poles are sourced from our watershed? Or do we ever kind of follow a pole from harvest all the way through?
Um, so the manufacturer is Stella Jones that we typically, there's two really manufacturers, Stella Jones or Bell Pole. Stella Jones actually did a harvest in our watershed, uh, last, last year or the year before. And I know that they did some polling in there. But typically, the difference is between when you pole, you actually have to do a select cut because you're actually make sure, you want to make sure that you don't damage it when you drop it on the, on the ground. And I know they did some polling, I think it's two years ago. And I think maybe Chris was up there when we were, they were actually doing it. Because we were polling along the, uh, 230,000-volt line that goes through our watershed.
Oh, yeah, I saw that too.
Yeah. And so that's, um, but I don't know if those actually went into, you know, we bought any of those or not, but-
Gotcha.
We did ask that question, can we do that? And the issue that the, the vendor has is it's getting the product through the plant. And so that's, that's the challenge that they face.
Okay. Um, and it seems like new poles are maybe a little taller than the old ones? Is that just to increase capacity to hang other things on poles or?
That's, that's part of it, but, um, what we've done is our standard used to be a 40-foot class two pole. Now we're doing a 45-class two is becoming our standard. But the other thing you'll notice is we're actually going through and some of those poles are, the strengths are going up as well. Because just like you pointed out, as new, other utilities go on those poles, we need to make sure that they have enough capacity to support those utilities.
Okay, thank you and thanks for coming tonight and participating in the work session last week.
Yeah.
Would those new power poles with increased strength be able to carry the weight of the transformers with the new energy efficiency standards if they make it this far?
Yes, I think they, we may have to increase one more size of going from a class two to class one. But we're hoping that that's years off.
Yes. Okay. Additional questions? Council Chenoweth?
I don't really have any questions. I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation. You're always very informative and your breadth of knowledge always surprises me. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Council President?
Rates, you have that rates, uh, slide up there. And McWater and Light's been historically in single-digit rates outside of the BPA contract changing. Do you, uh, see anything that citizens should be planning for in the years ahead?
So I know that, uh, we've been talking with BPA about, there's probably, um, this next, what we call the next rate period, which will be 20- we call the next rate period, which will be 26 to 28, the end of our current contract. There's going to be some significant rate increases, I think, from BPA because of inflation. And what's interesting is if you compare our rates to PG, so I was actually looking today. So a customer that uses 1,000 kilowatt hours a month in our service territory, it's about $76 a month. A customer in PG's service territory is 195. So.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Thank you. While we haven't formalized it yet, the other part of our kind of coming together, back together, these two bodies is doing our six-month meetings of the two policymaking bodies. As you all know, we just had the joint meeting focused on emergency management. Our next meeting will be in about six months. And we're going to be doing a little bit of a financial dig and setup. So not reviewing each other's budgets because we need another budget to review, but instead first laying out the financial relationship that's defined in our charter to make sure everybody on both bodies is aware of that and how that functions and operates and how the, the, the two entities are intertwined yet operating independently. And then from there, we'll do a little bit of an independent showing for each organization as well that's demonstrative of where income or revenues generated and where expenses go. And so I think that will be, will be good and will be in development over the next many months. So.
And I would also add, hopefully in that time, we'll have our, what we're calling our financial reserves policy completed. Because that's one of the things we're looking at driving, how we drive rates and, you know, what the dollars are really for.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much. Really appreciate your time today. We'll move into our consent agenda. Does any counselor, now, I will say really quickly, we have two, we have two appointments by resolution. I noted on our Zoom and in the council chambers, those folks aren't here tonight. So we won't pause and uncomfortably make themselves, introduce themselves. So having said that, does any counselor wish to request any item be removed from the consent agenda and heard on its place on the regular agenda?
I move that we go with the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Mankey to approve the consent agenda as, as presented, and a second from Council President. All those in favor, please second, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed say nay. And the consent agenda has passed unanimously. We'll now consider Resolution Number 2024-11, a resolution authorizing the city manager to amend by change order the contract with Fackler Construction Company for the construction manager, general contractor for the Any Door Place at McMinnville Navigation Center. And I'd like to call on Jody Christensen, our special projects manager, to present.
Thank you, Mayor, Council President, and counselors. I'd like to reintroduce myself, Jody Christensen, Special Projects Manager. And with me tonight, I have our YCAP partner. If you'd like to introduce.
Amber Hansen-Moore, Deputy Director.
The matter before you is for a change to the Fackler Construction Contract for the Navigation Center referred to as the Any Door Place. This change is to help pay for the cost of a utility crossing, which was one of the exclusions on the original contract. The crossing has been engineered and coordinated with the McMinnville Water and Light, Oregon Department of Transportation, City of McMinnville, and the project's civil engineer. Knowing that this utility crossing would eventually result in a change order to the contract, the city retained a contingency fund to cover the cost of this project and any other additional project costs. The city contingency fund is accounted for in the fiscal year 24 city budget under affordable housing grants. The 2024-11 resolution authorizes the city manager to sign the change order and gives authority to sign future change orders not to exceed the remaining contingency amount of $19,654.41. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
This was already, you knew that it was going to be, you just were uncertain about what the total was going to be.
Yes. So there were a set of exclusions from the original contract, and we've been tracking those throughout the evolution of the project. And so this item was known to us and it came into focus early this year. And so that's why we're bringing it before you.
Okay, it sounds to be very reasonable to me.
Any additional questions or comments? Not hearing any. I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-11 as presented.
So moved.
Thank you. I have a motion from Counselor Chenoweth and a second from Counselor Mankey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed say nay. And the resolution has passed unanimously. We'll now consider Resolution Number 20. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of your work on this too. Sorry to, not to rush through.
Great cooperation.
Yes, thank you. We now consider Resolution Number 2024-16, a resolution adopting a fiscal year 2023-24 budget amendment for the Fire District Transition Fund and a general fund contingency transfer budget amendment. And I'd like to call on Jeff Towery, our city manager, to present.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, the resolution before you would implement a supplemental budget that would allow us to book the expenses for the final set of one-time payments related to the transition to the McMinnville Fire District. There was another expenditure that was in, another one-time expenditure that was included in a supplemental budget earlier this year. There are three aspects to this supplemental budget. One is the balance of the former ARPA funds related to the purchase of the ambulance that Council President mentioned during his report. The, the most significant item is the, the transfer of the length of service award program, which is a pension program for volunteers. And then the third item was to make the district whole for the mapping error that I, that occurred prior to the election. The total one-time cost through supplemental budget, including the previous action, and this one is about $1.4 million. They impact the, the city's contingency and no other impacts on operational budgets. And because they are one-time costs, this, this will wrap up the direct expenses on the transfer of assets to the Fire District. I'm happy to answer any questions. And staff recommends that you approve the resolution before you tonight.
Thank you so much. Any council discussion or questions of staff? Not hearing any. I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-16 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Mankey and a second by Council President Garvin. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed say nay. The resolution has passed unanimously. We'll now hear ordinances. We'll consider the first reading with a possible second reading of ordinance number 5143. Does any counselor need to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding this ordinance? Okay, we will now consider the matter of ordinance number 5143. Does any counselor reject having the ordinance read by title only? Will the city attorney, David Leitenberg, please read the ordinance by title only?
Yes, ordinance number 5143. An ordinance repealing all campaign finance and disclosure requirements of Chapter 2.10 of the McMinnville Municipal Code.
Thank you. And will you please present, sir?
Yes, thank you. This is the same issue that was brought before you at a work session, I want to say about a month ago. The staff report is almost unchanged and we are moving forward with your recommendation to bring this ordinance as stated now, repealing the campaign finance and disclosure requirements. You'll notice that one of the changes in the staff report is one of the requests that came out of that work session, specifically being that staff will work on getting information onto the website, directing people more carefully toward resources available and toward the information that will be available on the state's campaign finance locations.
Thank you. Any council discussion or questions at this time? Not hearing any. I would ask for a motion accepting the first reading of ordinance number 5143.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Chenoweth and a second from Council President Garvin. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed say nay. The motion has passed, ordinance number 5143 has passed it, passed on its first reading unanimously. And I will now ask the city attorney to read the ordinance again by title only.
Thank you. Ordinance number 5143. An ordinance repealing all campaign finance and disclosure requirements of Chapter 2.10 of the McMinnville Municipal Code.
Thank you. And I would now ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 5143.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Mankey and a second from Council President Garvin. And I would ask our city recorder to poll the council.
Counselor Gary.
Aye.
Counselor Mankey.
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Aye.
Counselor Payne.
Aye.
And Council President Garvin.
Aye.
And the ordinance is adopted unanimously. I will now adjourn the city council meeting at 8:42 PM. The city will go into, the council will go into the conference room for a close-to-the-public specially called executive session pursuant to.